Sticker renewed.
I wish they, that's actually simpler. You can do it online, but I think I gotta take mine to.
Oh, emissions?
Emissions, yeah.
That's a whole nother story.
I know. Alright. I'm, it's ready, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, is that going out? Alright, three, four, and, okay. Okay, I'd like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Village of Camden Hills for Wednesday, August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Brown, would you mind calling the roll, please?
Sure. Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Copac?
Here.
Chairman Frederick?
Here.
Commissioner Lorario is absent. Commissioner Teath?
Also absent. Commissioner McCalvy?
Here.
And we also have the village attorney, Carmen Forte.
Alright, we have a quorum. Item number three, approval of the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission's special meeting of July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. I had sent my edits into Mr. Brown earlier, and I believe he sent out another packet with corrections in it, so I might have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Alright, I've heard, it was second, second, second by Mr. Anderson. Any discussions or additions that you'd like to add? Or corrections, edits? Hearing done. All those in favor to approve the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries to approve.
One abstention.
Oh yeah, one abstention, okay. Mr. McCalvy is abstaining. Motion carries. Okay, public comments for non-agenda items. So if you wanna talk about something that's not part of the public hearing for the self-storage facility, or for the variance application, something else about that. You know, this is a time to step up and let us know what you think, or what you hear. Is there anybody who'd like to make any public comments at this time? Seeing nobody rushing to the podium, I will move on to item number five. Public hearing case number twenty-five oh four, special use application for a self-storage facility on Old Le Fox Road. Mr. Brown, would you like to either introduce it, or introduce the applicant, and have them give a presentation, or how would you?
Uh. Yeah, I don't care. They have a presentation, we can go straight to that. I mean, I can describe it, so we have, um, the Wells, Dan and Kelly, Mackey Holdings, they're the applicants, and, um, we've been in discussion about this for some time, and it is on an unaddressed parcel just south of the Great Western Trail and east of Old Le Fox Road. And it's about one point one seven acres in size, a hundred feet wide. The northern boundary is five hundred and thirty feet, and the southern boundary is four hundred and ninety feet, so it's not quite tri- rectangular. And they are proposing a self-storage facility. There'd be ten units. I think they can address this. I think it's more intention that people would store cars, antique-type vehicles here, vintage vehicles. I'll let them address that. I noted that there was no landscape plan submitted with this, and we do have landscaping requirements under zoning ordinance, and, um, they said they understood that, and that there were landscaping requirements, they're aware of those, and they'd just like to get some assurances of the zoning first, and then proceed. And they fully understand that they would have to meet all the village's appearance requirements and landscaping, stormwater requirements, when they get to the building permit stage, so.
Current zoning, if I refresh my mind?
This is RD.
RD?
Yeah.
So there is no zoning, there's no zoning?
No zoning, it's just a specialty.
Okay, just double-checking, making sure nothing else is, okay, okay. Alright, with that, the applicant like to?
Yes.
Give us some information on what you're planning?
Briefly, I'm assuming everybody has gotten packets on those. I'm Dan Wells, this is my wife Kelly. Like he said, we own that acre piece of land right at Old Le Fox, and we work next to that Great Western, we've had it for a few years. We've been working with people on what we can do there. It won't be possible along with working with the water and sewer department out here, because of the limitations that, you know, that provides and things like that. And we have submitted this special use application to put up storage units, storage units that are a special use in that district. And what we are proposing is to build units that look like this. They would be individually owned, the target market would be car collectors, someone who wants to store their boats, someone who wants to store their motorhomes, something like that. It will be, it will be a condoized property. We are not gonna run it as a rental, so each one will be owned by the person that's occupying it. There'll be an association with bylaws, you know, that oversee what can happen there, what can't happen there, and how we can do it. So, we briefly just put together this, to give a visual aid for people to see what it is, and it's not a mini self-storage type facility. It's gonna be a nicer upscale type facility that's gonna be owned. We do have floor plans here, if you guys don't have them in your drawings or in your packets, so you can see it. And then to his point with the landscaping, we do know that there's landscaping, and we do know that there are landscaping requirements, and we would have a gated entrance with various options to, um, for privacy and protection and, you know, appearance on that roadside, and what will be on the Le Fox side. This would be the, uh, as they're built, if you're coming up sixty-four westbound, this would kinda be the, what you would see when you went past the bank. It would look like this, where we have them staggered and offset, so it's gonna look like it's a long, straight, um, flat building. It's got some character, multiple colors. This would be the side you would see off Old Le Fox. You would be looking back the other way, with different material. Just try to dress up the ends and the bronts and the base with a little bit of color. So, um, anything else?
I guess, Lord, the concept of, in our minds of this, was bringing community home, now they say it's gonna be eight, eleven owners. So there would be a place for girls, we'd put some lighting towards dominating the family ordinance. With character, this is in here just to show, we know that, we know the department's on the street side, possibly a stone facade or something that would match with more of the, um, the lifestyle. I guess, uh, yeah, and by angling them, and this is concept. No, that's set in stone, but that's definitely an interesting place, we're, you know, just here with me.
And to listen to your conversation concerns public, um, you know, the final design and, in fact, that's a whole landscape, and all of that. The property does currently have the sewer on it, that runs up behind the bank. This property has easement on it. The east end, the sewer goes onto our property, goes east about a hundred feet, and then goes towards, and goes north, um, up towards the Great Western, along the fence of the propane company. So, that is already there, it's already installed, and we're working with them to, you know, just get connections to that, so it's already, the system's already there, the substructure of it.
Um, they, I mean, I know that their capacity is limited, you know, for that, so that's always been a challenge. So have they shared with you their concerns, or limitations, or anything like that, or they're just saying, hey?
We've been working with them for eight months, I think, it's a while. Putting together estimates and, and, uh, the surface runoff, we've done all the calculations on that, and anticipating usage for water and sewer and things like that. They had an engineer that was working with them, who retired a month ago, a month and a half ago. But prior to that, he was all in, he said the calculations work, and, um, they have the capacity for that.
Okay.
We have looked at other options, and other things that we could do there that would exceed their capabilities, um, you know, start commercial or residential or other things like that, so. We felt that constructively, this would be a great use for that, with, you know, those types of limitations and things like that, that they're gonna be doing tomorrow night. We recently did some information to them, so we've kinda been slow-walking that a little bit, waiting to see, kinda looking for.
Yeah. I noticed in the plans, toilets, or toilet, singular, or was it, was it each unit gonna have a toilet, or, so each unit would have a toilet?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so like you're saying, it's kinda like almost a condo, like you own this, or?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Not with, anticipating once a week evening use, and then, you know, maybe at the weekend if it's not raining.
Yeah.
There'll be a few people there, but it'll be very little larger, very low traffic.
Uh, HVAC, um, you do on heating, oh, both?
Heating and air.
Heating and air will be as well, okay.
Yep.
Alright. And then those are, like, you said, that was our patios, or?
Um, currently.
Falconies, balconies, or something?
Yes, there's a. The design is, this, this is the floor plan. Uh, first floor, overhead door, entry door, bathroom, um, and then the mechanical area will be underneath the stair area up there. These stairs would go up to a, um, the main area, platform.
Within, within the building, correct?
Yes, that's the way, yes. And then off that would just be a sliding door, natural light.
Okay, and then that looks like, in the middle, yeah, I can see a picture in the middle, yeah, a little balcony, okay, alright.
And that is, I think we're on twelve by twelve for that, twelve by fourteen for this, and it would just, it really just designed to be a little office space, something that, you know, car collectors have files, all this.
Spare parts, right.
People work and do, you know, whatever, and, of course, just a little space up there from that.
Okay, very good. Anybody else have any questions?
I got a lot. I'm a racer by hobby and forever, it seems, but so I'm, I'm really enthused about what your approach is here, and, you know, putting something like this, you know, in the village, because it becomes a focal point for community. I really like it. Along those lines, though, applying for a storage unit, is that because you couldn't find anyplace else to fit it in? Because it almost, in many ways, it fits the light industrial description, because, I mean, you've got storage space, you've got power, you've got office, you've got, um, basically, you know, garage door access, so it really falls, to me, more like a light industrial classification. And the reason I bring that up is, if I, if I bring in a race car, and I wanna work on it, and I bring in, and as a condo, I can bring in equipment, and, you know, like one of your descriptions there, you had a pad on the back for an air compressor, and things like that, so if I had a, you know, lathe, and drill press, and all this other equipment that was part of the, you know, my race shop, would that still be allowed under the storage requirement? But yet I can see any enthusiast who's really serious about, you know, his, his car and his hobby, wanting to go to that extreme of putting in, put his shop there, that he might have in his garage at home, and, you know, bring it in here. So is there a question about, uh, more occupancy than a, a storage unit? That's why my question is, why, you know, self-storage?
Looking at me for an answer, okay, yeah, because I think it meets, it meets the definition. It misses principally, primarily, uh, a use that involves storage, as he mentioned, Mr. Wells mentioned, for automobiles, boats, trailers, whatever.
Right.
Uh, I guess if someone purchased it, they could store their household furniture, sofas, or whatever they wanted to, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, once they buy, they can store anything, so I think it fits that. If there's uses or activities that, that are maybe accessory to that, then to me, that would be okay.
Well, I just wanna make sure that-
It's not, it's not like a full-blown auto body shop.
Right. It's a hobbyist.
Yeah, it's a hobbyist, a hobbyist.
Yes, but I wanna make sure that that type of activity that would be there to support a car or a hobby, isn't precluded by the zoning.
And, in our perspective on that, the bylaws that we've written up, we've done research on other facilities similar to this, around this area and other areas, and there's a couple things, number one, probably the noise ordinance, if you hear that.
Yeah, right.
Could be enforced by local authorities, if that become, if you have nuisance. The ordinance would, it's already, it's ninety percent done, but waiting for review, but that would require that activity like that, takes place between eight and seven, um, it has to be done inside the unit.
Right.
And nothing to be outside, nothing to be worked on outside. All of those things have been considered.
Yeah, okay.
And we would address that with a, um, set of bylaws that would go along with, you know, part of the contract when you buy that condo.
I think this is a good, this concept is, I'm just, how am I gonna say it? It's a, it's a high-end, so the people that are purchasing, we wanna protect them, we want the image to not be household self-storage, streetwear, and that's not all that we're trying to, here, this is eight to ten people, but they may have airplanes, they may have hot, it's a collector, collectible condo, the concept, and so we have to keep the scale up for the people that we want to come to us. And so our bylaws, we have written, we just wanna get approval by our turn, but we have noise control implied, ours, these are garage units, so no living or overnight stays allowed, and that's a big thing that people ask, but we go on safety and road prevention, traffic and common area conduct, modifications and customization, you know, you can't burn out, you can't, you have loud noise, I mean, we've made it very specific.
Yeah.
And I can share that with you, too, and ways to disposal, cleanliness, security access, and standards violations enforcement. I mean, we've fully thought through around this part, and we know that I thought through it, I would want this, so.
And, and we're trying to get that image with the design.
Yeah.
You know, we're not just cleaning up eight corners that are next to each other, that, you know, someone can buy, who, who run the construction company out of it. If this intended for storage, um, if that's the customer that will be wanting to work with himself, you know, so. Some guy has a bunch of nice cars, he doesn't wanna neighbor that is doing a bunch of that, you know, grinding work and stuff in the neighborhood, but, um, again, they own it, they can do it.
They own it, right.
They wanna, they wanna walk on grindable, but, you know, the diner do whatever, touch something up, as long as it's within reason, you know, they won't be allowed to do it inside.
Yeah, I would expect that, anything that I could do in my garage, I should be able to be able to do there.
Correct. Maybe you probably live in a neighborhood that, you know, a few stables.
Right, exactly.
Like we have power tools, air compressors, deep-tongued vacuums allowed only inside.
Yes.
Garage door stuff.
Right.
I mean, we want this to be a respectable place for the people that are coming in, a lot of people.
Yeah, I mean, any, any respectable business, you know, isn't a, quote, a light industrial complex, would be doing the same thing. I mean, when I say do, I mean, they would be abiding by those same type of rules and regulations, because they don't wanna be a bad neighbor either.
And there will be a whole network of, of association, that's happening, so.
Uh, one concern I, I thought about the landscaping, and it's the Great Western Trail there, um, you know, when you put a shrub in, it's nice, it's a three-gallon or five-gallon pot, you know, five years later, it gets a lot bigger, which is great, but at the same time, people come whipping across the Great Western Trail on bikes and stuff, and I just wanna make sure that there's plenty of sight distance. You know, that the sight distance, so that, that people, you know, so that cars can see, like when they're pulling out, they, you know, just all of a sudden turn right, and all of a sudden you're hitting a jogger or something like that, so I just-
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, so that would be one of my concerns, if you're looking for feedback.
The fence across the front will be setback, um, with that landscaping inside and out, or out, um, depending upon the setback there, and then as you pull off the road, the gate will be, um, the way we have it designed, I believe, is forty feet, so that you have plenty of room to come off, even if you're pulling, you know, a camper trailer or something like that, and you're completely off the road, and before you hit that gate, so that the gate can open, and you're not disrupting traffic or anything like that, so we have,
Just wanna make sure it's taken into consideration there. And I don't know about if, I can't remember if there's signage there, on that road, if there's signage there, probably is signage on there, but, but there, I'll make sure that we had something like that, just to let people know that. Because there's a lot of trees on that Great Western Trail, and people just come, you know, zipping, zipping out, and, so, just, just a concern.
Oh, I was, I was out there today to, you know, to see what the line actually looks like, where that, that tree line is, is that actually at the end of the property, or is your property, or have those trees encroached onto your actual prop?
Those trees haven't crooked.
Okay.
That's the, the preserve, you know, the preserve part of that.
The trail side.
Of course, because they're probably, the, twenty feet before the trail.
Yes.
Right.
So part of those trees are on ours, and part of both of them are on theirs.
Okay.
So, those trees will remain along the trail, so when you're on the trail.
You're, you're gonna-
There'll be no gap.
You're gonna be trimming them back to?
Correct.
To your property line?
Yes, yes, but there's still a-
A lot.
Bunch of trees up there.
Like springbauer.
When you're on the Great Western, when you're pulling it out, you will not see any of those.
What's the, uh, constructor material on that side of the building? Is it any different than the other side of the building?
By metal, it's the metal side.
Okay.
On the back side.
Alright. Any other questions or feedback, feedback for the proposal?
Yes.
Jared?
Yeah, um, so-
Hey Jared, just do me a favor, just put the microphone on, just, it helps, it helps, thanks, appreciate it.
So, um, first concern would be, um, some of the things you referred to, of, you know, caring for cars, or whatever, if you're doing a little mechanical work, that kinda thing, or bodywork, or anything like that. Anything that might produce, uh, potentially hazardous fumes, waste, anything like that? I mean, how do you control that?
That's, yeah, we have it, um, no search, um, of more, they're probably dealing with technical, they're pretty, they're all you have to have, ABC, prior rated, I think it's fair, they're willing to put in work in those, like, cases inside, you know, electrical work must be done by licensed electricians, and you're kinda taking into all of those kind of thoughts in here, which I can share.
And then with, uh, bylaws can be changed from one, uh, group to the next, um, and also that, so whether it was during your term of, I assume you're gonna own the property, but the individual condo's, of course, owned by the, the individual investors, um, but what prevents, if they were to sell the property to somebody else, that the same type of bylaws would be enforced, or is it something that the village can say these are based on what their bylaws are, the, the gist of them, or the basics of them, that that is the rules that need to be used for a situation like this, and that's sort of, right, to, between Carmen and between Jim, as far as what's enforceable?
I guess, just for a clarifying question, so, once the units are sold, would the association have, um, common ownership of the rest of the common areas, or will you retain ownership of them?
The association.
Okay, so it, so it will be maintained by the, so, the, the association would then have control over, uh, the bylaws themselves? It would require, you know, that required a number of, uh, unit owners to amend them by majority vote, and they could.
And they could, we know they could, so especially like if they sold the property and weren't longer involved, that's why I'm looking at the next generation of, quote, ownership, you know?
Right, so the village wouldn't, wouldn't, um, enforce any covenants or any bylaws over the property, but as a condition of approval, the special use could have something relating to, um, verbiage or conditions that have to be within those bylaws regarding certain types of uses. I mean, you're going, you may already have those types of restrictions as conditions on the special use, if they're approved anyway. A violation of that special use would be enforceable by the village, special use is gonna be recorded on the property, or would be recorded on the property. So, um, you could, in addition to that, you can, like I said, have conditions that certain things are inside of those bylaws, so that they are internally enforceable against the individual unit owners by the association itself. It wouldn't be the village enforcing them, but the village is saying that these things need to be in there, that's recorded against the property.
I, I, would it not be similar to a subdivision, or some, I mean, some, somebody can't put a paint booth in their garage, or their house, and their neighbors, or something like that, right?
Right, and-
That would be dealt with by the association, or by the village?
Right, uh, it, both, it, it could be both. If it's a nuisance activity, it could be handled by the village, and that's a good point with a subdivision, typically one of the conditions is that the, usually at the preliminary approval, you'll have, um, a copy of the draft bylaws. As a condition of the approval here, you, if, if your vote to approve, or the village board votes to approve, you'd wanna have those bylaws included, uh, for review and approval by the, by the village board, or at least for, um, review at the time that it's at the board level, uh, to be reviewed by staff, to make sure that everything's in there that, that, that should be required. So that's, you know, that, that's the opportunity to see what the proposed bylaws would, would be, um, and, and they would be on file with the special use application, so, um, at least they're out there in the open.
Yeah, 'cause I, my concern would be you see a drift over time-
Sure.
From what's being proposed-
Yeah.
To essentially individual units that are being light industrial, being individual businesses, that kind of, kind of thing.
Right.
So, uh, that would be, you know, 'cause it's, it's easy over time, and this is not necessarily a, an area where you're going to have probably any neighbors, um, that are going to pay too much attention to that kinda thing, because you're talking about a bank, you're talking about propane facility, you're talking about condos across the trail, so except for the few houses that are on the west side of the Fox Road, and the one that's just immediately south of this, those are the only property owners that might, might be paying attention on a day-to-day basis.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, the, the, the best way is to include conditions on the special use, because those are recorded against the property. special use, because those are recorded against the property, and then can be monitored by the village, if there are violations, the village can easily look at the special use that is approved via ordinance, it remains in the village's records, um, but also including some condition that, that certain characteristics remain in the bylaws, certain prohibitions, let's say, remain in the bylaws, um, or if the bylaws are to be amended, that the village is notified prior to a proposed bylaw amendment, um, and that the village, you know, can have an understanding of what might change, and whether or not that would con- conflict with a condition that's in the special use already.
And then a question for the petitioners, um, Ms. Wells, are, um, what's the height of your garage doors, is it tall enough for, you know, RV, that kind of thing, that people, if they do want to, maybe they can store something like that, or whatever, okay, I just want to be sure, 'cause that, that certainly has something of value to the community to have, uh, people who have RVs that might want to store, uh, weather and stuff.
Okay, all right, so, what you're saying, Carmen, then, is that if we include the description of the covenants and restrictions as part of the approval, then.
Or the bylaws, yeah.
Or the by, whatever, the bylaws or CNRs, or whatever they, however you're gonna describe it, then that becomes the, uh, let's say, governing principles of this development, meaning that self-storage facilities, someone, you know, five years from now could say, in the village could say, well, it says self, self-storage facility, but they're using it for, uh, parties, or they're using it for office space, and it goes beyond the description of self-storage. So that's why I want to make sure that this is not going to be able to be misinterpreted or reinterpreted, to change, use, or make it more restrictive than it is, because it, to me, it's not self-storage, there's somewhere in between self-storage and light industrial, and, you know, I want to make sure that that's codified.
Right, so, a couple of ways you can do that, um, yeah, the applicant has indicated that there would be, uh, an association, uh, so that could be a condition, that, and that, uh, one, that the units themselves are individually sold, they're not to be, uh, you know, rented on a long-term basis by the applicant or another entity, um, that association is created, that bylaws exist for the association, that have been reviewed and approved by the village, and match the conditions on the special use, um, and, and something related to, um, the anticipated uses inside of these units, it could be, you know, something fairly general, um, and, and even potentially a, a list of, of uses that you, uh, would, would be unpermitted, um, or prohibited, uh, within, within the, the units themselves, I mean, you're, if, if the use were to vary wildly from what has been approved, it would be a violation of the special use.
Yes.
Um, and, um, you know, there, you know, that, when you're talking about selling versus renting, I mean, I'm not sure if the bylaws will, will, uh, address this, but, you know, whether or not there's rental by the end user or the end owner, that might be something to consider as well, um, you know, you could think condo buildings, they typically have restrictions on either rental altogether, or rental of a certain percentage, so, um, so, yep, subdivisions as well, um, so there, there are a number of conditions you can put on, put on something like this.
Well, if it's, if you're, if you're talking about a true condo, then doesn't the, uh, the, the ho-, the board or the management of the condo have say in terms of when somebody can sell and buy something?
No, they don't control it, they're called tenant, like, you know, the transaction, they don't control or approve, yes, or no.
Hmm, I think they, they should, because other words, now, now you're getting back down to the level of, you know, a rental property, almost, if you don't have control over, you know, the, uh, transactions or resale of those properties.
It, it may depend on the, the way that the association itself is structured, I mean, if it's, if it's really individual ownership, um, with an association, I mean, you could have a manager who's managing the common areas on behalf of the association.
Yeah.
Um, you know, sometimes, uh, associations, uh, whether they're for this type of property or residential properties, will have a right of first refusal for purchase of a unit if it goes up for sale, that's typically if there are rentals involved, that way the association can, you know, rent the unit, um, but, you know, clearing, uh, a potential owner or something like that, I mean, it's more of like a, a co-op setup, which doesn't really sound like that's what's being applied for.
Uh, Mr. McGurley?
Yeah, just a follow-up to that point, because you say you've got a draft of the covenants or bylaws, do you address the fact that when the owner wants to sell it, or that he cannot rent it to anyone? Is that part of, uh, 'cause, 'cause to the earlier discussion, uh, uh, many subdivisions have that written in their covenants and bylaws, that I can't rent my, I can't sell my house, but I want to rent it, and I cannot, I can't rent it, so I'm just curious.
And honestly, that, I'm glad we're having this discussion, because we have the wrong intention of adding one of these, period.
So that's something, then, therefore you could put in, you, you can add to the covenants.
The owner occupier.
Yeah, owner occupier, there you go.
There's not any, in fact, we, we don't want to do that kind of thing.
Yeah. The, the other, uh, question that I had, the other ones I checked off, 'cause I think they've been asked, but the, the other one you had, you had addressed, and said there was no, um, you're not allowed to stay over.
Correct.
Uh, so, uh, the fact that that second level may have a restroom or a toilet, uh, isn't like you can build it out into a, a space where I can sleep there at night, or anything like that?
Right.
Okay, it's not allowed, all right.
It might have a mini fridge.
No, I get that, yeah, right. I'm good.
All right, what more, Jared?
What are, again, I missed it, but what, on the southern border, there's various little blue rectangles and the red and all, what, what are those?
Those were parking spots.
Parking, parking spots, all right.
I do, I, one question, I believe it, I thought I saw it as an outline of twelve parking spots on there, um, I think there's twelve parking spots, and I, just FYI, the, the ordinance has different uses for over twelve, over ten, uh, so there's like, there's different, there's different requirements for over ten, and it seems more cumbersome, uh, so I don't know if there's a requirement to have one per unit, or that, that requirement, but I do know that if it's over ten, then there's a whole other level of things within the ordinance about.
And we could take a talk.
Yeah, yeah, just, but I just, the feedback, just give you that feedback about the twelve spaces, okay? All right.
And what are the red, uh, squares, um, anywhere that appear there, uh, in your diagram? Uh, these, these red spot, uh, are sort of the one next to the parking, I can quite understand what that is, I don't have a key here, see these, they're red.
What page are you looking at?
It's on the examples of the plan layout, initial, uh, layout.
This, this would be an example of a motorhome parked in there.
Oh, I see.
That's an example of two vehicles parked in there.
Okay.
That's, so, that.
Oh, I see.
Maybe a trailer, or, you know, something parked there.
It's like you've got a three.
Just to see how, how things would fit.
I see.
Within there, so, just grab the, uh, forty-five foot trailer, and, but what would that look like inside there, and what would it fit, and how could you put two.
Or two cars, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's what that would be.
All right, any other questions or comments, feedback?
Can I just make one comment, uh, to, 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 um, concerning discussions on uses, so, again, depending what use it might change to, segue to, if it's a permitted use, that would be fine, and the RV district would allow some light industrial type uses, so that would be okay, if it's something that's not permitted use or special use, that would be illegal.
Mm-hmm, sure.
We would seek to stop that through program enforcement, if it's another special use, then they'd have to come back and discuss it, but if you can go from a special use into permitted.
That's right, 'cause the light industrial is permitted, so anything that's sort of, uh, that, that nature.
It might be allowed.
Okay, okay, I feel, feel better about that, then.
Do you have any questions for us, or any, at, at this time?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, no further action at this time, so, all right, um.
Public comment?
Yeah, that might be a good, and public comment, yeah, thanks, yeah, public, public comment on that, would like to share what they think, yeah, thank you.
Hello, um, I'm not sure how this works, uh, my, 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 my name's Scott Etzel, I'm a resident of Camden Hills, and amazing construction, and, uh, I just wanted to comment and support on this, um, I think that, I'm sensing that maybe there's a little bit of angst over the kind of condos, and so I think it's helpful to remember that, uh, I don't know why these are called condos, if they're kind of all over the country, that we're, I think, we, in there, there's, uh, people, weird or not, who want to sit around and not necessarily park, but people stare at them, fuck them, people about them, it's a thing, um, and a good example of this is, in the local area, is the Island Gate Motor Condos, and Makerville, it's right on the corner of eighty and Route fifty-nine, and interestingly enough, Makerville does tend to have fairly high interest in development, uh, but if you look at that development, it's actually not as nicely done as what's being proposed here, uh, from a standpoint of, here's my background in the community, um, and it's something that, you know, for residents of Camden Hills, as much as I love living here, I don't necessarily love the fact that I can actually build a garage, or bike, um, so I think there is a, a new lead market for this, and in my opinion, I think it is a much better use of the property than some of the other options that we could have into a neighborhood, so, um, landscape, so, so, that's, we can do well on that.
Okay, thank you, any other comments?
My name is Scott Williams, um, I would just say, now, so, it's, um, this is a pretty common use of property like this in many towns, I mean, one was mentioned, Neighborville with Gilbert's is doing something like this, or, it always has it, um, you don't need to add, there's like twelve of these units, it's not uncommon, what it really is used for, and I'm wearing on Camden Hills, you know, collector car, you know, which is one of the best shows around here, everybody there wants to store their car and other options, when I was on the board, we passed buildings bigger, why? Because people love to put their stuff inside, um, this is just another way, another option, just like they're putting building on their property, that they could be doing all kinds of crazy stuff, and, but once again, when I was on the board, we kind of stayed, hey, what are you doing, your building, you're building a building, um, this is one of those things where it's just really, you know, I've got two Porsche guys in my neighborhood that know a lot of this, and they're like, and their Porsches are like, I don't know, foreign, Alamo Porsches, if these guys aren't poor people that are looking, these are people that are gonna just, if you get near their car, they're gonna get this, I, I'm just saying, um, you know, the other thing, and, and this comes back to being on the board when I was on it, um, you know, we have a propane company in the middle of our, our, our town, I don't know if you get ugly or use, I'm not knocking them, but it's propane, it's not really, we are like, I could walk outside, we can all walk at, and all walk onto the property where the guy's letting guys rent spots for semi trucks, it's right here, the guy's advertising that he rents spots, okay, well, it's the ugliest use you could possibly have in a town, but once again, the guy has the right to do it, 'cause he owns the property, nobody's saying, or nobody's going, wow, your semis are ugly, is someone sleeping in them, sometimes we get a little crazy, I think, with some of the, some of the things that we, we ask for, but, and then, and then across from Brown Road, or not through the Brown, the box, sorry, there's probably this strip of the ugliest looking, dilapidated, commercial buildings I've ever seen in my life, I always wonder what's back there, and what company, that they're doing back there in those companies, 'cause if I, if they ever went for sale, I would buy one, just to make it look nice, 'cause they are the ugliest building I've ever seen along that trail, um, so I would say this is gonna be, we're gonna wish that he had more property, 'cause it's gonna make our town a prettier, because a lot of the things we have are kind of ugly, we suck, um, I drive through and I'm like, this, I can't believe we have this, and I can't believe, why can't we make it nicer, and the coffee shop that Neil's in, gorgeous, gorgeous, it was, it was a total win, they have a company, but, just a comment, I don't know, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm a digital consultant, I live right around the street from, um, Melissa Gere, I have local time today, um, so, I think it's interesting, I'm not here necessarily to advocate for, or not advocate for it, but, um, two things I'd be interested in, is one, um, I think it's always important when you have your intention of use, and then there's people, right, and people are gonna use it for what they want to use it for, and, um, I think it would be important that whatever the bylaws that you have are enforceable, and that in fact, uh, you can't operate business out of it, you have noise, or, or, and so forth, um, so I think that's something to offer, something else to address, maybe that's very important, and then the other thing is actually more around safety, and I probably mentioned it, so, um, I drive by there, like I said, local times a day, and if there's a blind corner, um, people, you know, just, it's, people, people ride their bikes and step through there, they're supposed to stop, they don't, um, and, uh, kids walking around through there, and it's very sleepy, I, I don't know if anybody lives, I literally can walk there, I don't know if everybody else will be affected as much as myself, 'cause I live there, but, um, it's just important that we really understand what the impact traffic study is and so forth is gonna be, because people, and, and I don't know, maybe wouldn't, there's, there's all this stuff around there, but, uh, just need to add to the mess, um, so, I just think it's really important that we understand what the actual effect is gonna be of that, and that, and frankly, if somebody could park an RV in one of those spots, I'd give them a prize, because that is a small strip of land, so I'm impressed that you guys were able to come up with a design, because I think it would be really fascinating, if I made them, you know, go on, that you did it, and, and, but, um, yeah, so that's mainly safety, and then, um, and really lock it down, and use you guys' product, I just appreciate it, but, um, I could just see how to take, take a turn, and, you know, you got less than fifteen more cycles, too, and they're all, all day long, and, and not everybody's upset, but, maybe not people who's doing that, that's it, thank you.
Any other comments?
So.
There's coming, one more, public comment.
Hi, my name is Renee Etzel, and I don't believe in the white of the sky, but I know that, um, I have been owning two classic cars for a number of years, and looking for something like this, and it would be a really, a, a great commodity for the community, I think, also, as they were talking about how these are higher-end units for car storage, and, um, and I understand your concern about, about the, um, the safety of people having in and out, but these higher-end customers are not people that are visiting in and out of places, they're trying to be very cautious and careful with their cars, their vehicles generally cost probably more than what the condo is going to cost them, you know, and, um, and also, I think that with that sense of community that you're talking about, if having people there, that will also bring people with money to downtown Camden Hills, to be able to eat at the restaurant, and to be able to, um, come, have cake, and the different places that Camden Hills has to offer as far as the, the, the gray downtown, so I think that it would be something that would really enhance that downtown Camden Hills area, and bring some people with, um, with the means to be able to support the business.
Thank you, another comment?
We haven't been talking about construction at this point in time, but, what, I would anticipate construction of these units on the interior would not be wood framed with wood paneling, that it should be some core, some sort of fire penetration over an hour, like five-inch drywall, some other five-inch drywall, so that the, if a fire should occur, like if those periodically in homes across America, the reason the five-inch drywall is there is to protect the home from going up, if a fire occurs in the garage, so I would think that someone who's having a very expensive car, and they're doing whatever would prefer, they have something that's gonna protect on the off chance that their unit starts on fire, they don't want to go into the rest of the units, and I don't know what the construction would be, but it's a concern of mine for your clients, essentially, and for the village to appropriately, if it's gonna be predominantly automobile storage, to correctly zone it and make it so that a fire occurs in one unit, it can't spread throughout.
Um, my understanding is that building codes won't, will, uh.
Sure, there's, there's.
Sure, there's, there's fire separation regulations.
Yeah, and that's all part of our existing codes. So, yeah, but, good point. That would be addressed, that would be addressed by our existing codes.
Any other comments from the public? Have you got any other comments? Mr. Johnson, yes?
Just, I'm not quite clear. So it looks like the adjacent property is essentially going to handle the water runoff.
I think it's part of their property, the, on the eastern side?
I just don't know. I mean, there's nothing on here that shows if there's a need for any retention, detention, whatever.
I think this is page seventy-one of the packet. I think there's, there's kind of a little red outline, there's green swales, it kind of shows the detention pond. It also shows the proposed sanitary connection and the elevation in green of all the, which looks like it's getting smaller and smaller, so it'll basically be a retention. Correct me if I'm wrong, is retention...
You are correct, and the design is here, if you have any questions.
Oh, so that's the, that's the, okay, I got a big red trailer on parked there at the moment.
Yeah, curved and pitched. Stormwater drains these in that detention area, and that's more than a little bit with cane tummy on, that all those, cane tummy for those, you know, about that. Correct?
Yeah, like drainage behind the building as well. And, okay. Any other concerns, feedback?
You might check with the Forest Reserve and landscaping and things like that, since they're, we ultimately would want to try to get as much native landscaping along the trail, and try to control, more importantly, probably the invasive species, that you're not planting like Bradford pear or something like that along there, because that would defeat some of their efforts to try to maintain native vegetation along the trail, so.
No, no. I mean, it's just a, part of the landscape plan, I guess it would be part of the landscape plan.
Well, that north side...
Along the Great Western Trail.
The Great Western Trail and the propane companies' property line goes like this, and it drops at ours, and they own twenty feet more of ours, and goes back up over the box, those people on the other side. So there's a larger gap between the center of the trail and our property line that are far with anybody else to ease or less. So that current vegetation that is there, that is owned by the Forest Reserve or Fitch or maintained by them, will remain there. There really won't be a lot of need or support for us to put anything else back there. What's there, what we're thinking?
Yeah, I know, I was...
We're not going to level that out, I'll clear that out.
I was more from the standpoint that if you are, you know, based on landscape plan requirements, that...
You're not playing buckthorn or something?
You're going a little bit more closely to, more heavily with the native vegetation versus ornamental stuff, simply because you're right next to what ultimately will be more of a natural area as the Forest Reserve continues its restoration efforts with all its properties. So that's where you're in touch with them.
It's good feedback to say maybe more, much more natural landscaping, much more native, native, more...
It might save you some money, too, if you talk to them and find, well, what are you all looking for and such?
Especially on that north side, yeah. That's a good point.
That's a great idea, that's the feedback we're hoping for, and to this point, if we get anything, we have not, we have to go through the first feedback like that.
Okay, how are we doing? Do we want to make a motion and then have a discussion, see about conditions? Or do you want to just take a quick poll and see how you're feeling, and then just go from there? Or do you have more questions?
I'm in favor.
Okay, favor? Jim?
Yeah, I was just going to make a motion, we've got a second, and we have a discussion on what we need to have too.
Okay, but Tom's pretty much in the affirmative, so, okay. On page six of seven, there is a motion?
Yeah. I make a motion, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to the Village Board the approval of an application for a special use to allow a self-storage facility at the location described in the staff memorandum to the PZC. I motion that the PZC forward the three findings as discussed by the commission at this meeting and stated in the staff memorandum.
Second?
Okay, we have a second, so discussions, I'd like to add conditions to that as well. So some of the conditions, I'll just start, and then, so some of the things we just, I just jotted down, we talked about, condition, we would, conditions on a special use, we would like to, the bylaws reviewed by staff prior to board level submission. Certain prohibitions are included in the bylaws, but not limited to. The village must be notified of bylaw changes. No units are allowed to be rented, it should be owned or occupied, and no businesses should be operated within the, within the units. If there's other special uses you'd like, you say no overnight, no overnight living, you know, no over like living, for lack of a better term. And whether there are any other ones besides the one that staff had suggested that you wanted to add as a condition in there.
I'm good.
Okay, all right, so can you have a roll call, please?
So are, are we adding those conditions? Because we should either amend that motion or make another motion.
Yeah, I'll amend the motion to include the summary of our prior discussion, which was explained by the chairman.
Okay, we have a second.
Second?
Okay. All those papers say aye?
Aye. Okay, and then we're going to go over the findings later?
Yeah.
Do you mind if we do the roll call on this? Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kopeck?
Yes.
Chairman Frederick?
Yes.
Okay, and...
McKelvey, yes.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, sorry. Commissioner McKelvey, yeah.
I do have some...
Yeah.
Okay, so then the findings, look back on page six of seven, the findings is, first finding, proposed special use will not endanger the public health, safety, or welfare. Staff has suggested subject site is relatively secluded, and the use of the temporary, I'm just giving you the use of the property by ten tenants or owners of the self-storage unit should not create and undo, any undue hardships or health, safety, or welfare concerns. I agree with that. Is there anything you'd like to add on that? All right, the second finding, as proposed, the proposed special use is compatible with the general land use of adjacent properties and other properties within the immediate vicinity. The Wasco area is a mix of land uses, light industrial, commercial, mixed use residential. And the addition of a self-storage unit would, will, use will not be incompatible with this mix. I would agree with that. All right? Third final one, finding the special use in the specific location proposed is consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and, and adopted village land use policies. The zoning ordinance of 2024 allows various uses throughout Wasco, and it was acknowledged during the zoning commission's deliberation on a new zoning ordinance that there is, this area is unique. A self-storage facility will not be inconsistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance, which I think would be good. All right? Got it all, Jim? Just basically as presented, all right? There's no other comments on that, so those are the findings. All right? Very good. Anything else I'm missing or forgetting?
Probably take a vote on the findings.
Take a vote on the findings, thank you. All right. Roll call on the findings, please? Sure. Well, that's okay, let's just do the findings, I'll, I'll voice vote, all right? Voice vote for all those in favor of the findings that discussed, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion cares, or vote prepares. The findings pass, all right? Anything else I'm missing?
Idea when it goes to the Village Board then?
The zoning ordinance or village code indicates no later than sixty days the matters, or the recommendation and the findings are given to the village board, so, I mean, there's a meeting next Tuesday, but that agenda's been set, so earliest would be first meeting in September, I believe it's the second. If not, it would be two weeks after that, so sixteen, so.
All of them?
Yeah. Keep in touch with Jim, yeah.
Yeah, and we'll fill in any cracks if there's any missing information. Okay, all right, very good. Thank you very much for your presentation. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item. Special use, public hearing for the Planning and Zoning Commission case 2505, a variance application to allow placement of an accessory structure barn with lean-to in the front yard for Brown Road.
Will you do?
Yeah. Is there, is that on? I can't even tell if it, is that, is there a, is there a switch to turn on?
I mean, I can speak louder than this one.
Okay, all right. Yeah. If I, if I could just preface this, because this is a little confusing here. So there's, there's one subject parcel where the barn is going to go, if it gets approved, if it gets built. That parcel is in the village, right? And, Mr. Trickler?
Sir?
Chris. Came to the village, and we discussed this, we had a couple meetings with staff, I think the village president attended at least one, your attorney was at one, on different options on how to approach this, because the parcel in the village does not have a house on it, so he could not have a, an accessory structure until he had the primary structure. The applicant lives on an adjacent parcel, his house is there, but that parcel is not in the village, all right? So we went back and forth, and ultimately, the applicant agreed, there would be an annexation agreement prepared, and he would annex into the village where he lives. He could combine the lots, we could just treat it as a zoning lot, because they're under common ownership and they're adjacent to one another, either way. And then, we would have one zoning lot, or one combined consolidated lot, and then he would have the primary structure, and then he could build the accessory structure, the barn. There was still an issue with the location of, the desired location of the proposed barn. The nearest point is thirty-five feet from the property line, the front property line. The zoning code has a minimum of thirty-five feet, so he's meeting that. However, the location of the barn is in front of the house, that is, it's in the front yard. So that's what the variance is for, to put it in the front yard. So we should be looking at this tonight as if it's one parcel, ultimately, if this goes through, it will be, and the house is on one, right now in one parcel, and the proposed garage would be, or I'm sorry, barn would be on the other, other parcel. And they would be, as I mentioned, either treated as a zoning lot, because they're under common ownership, or a consolidation. So if you have any questions on that, you know, and then I'll let, allow the applicant to explain why he desires to place the structure here, and, and other details about the structure. Did I get all that right? That's correct, right?
All right. Could I have some clarity with this, though?
Yeah.
So in the diagram that shows the circle, yellow lot?
Yeah.
All right. And then where is the adjacent lot to that?
The, the one where he lives is to the, kind of the south or southwest.
Is that the five N two, four twenty-eight?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, so the idea, and that lot's helping? Where your house is?
So, so, okay, just to back up a minute, the lot itself has one legal description, but at some point in time, and at some point in time, the west two hundred feet was detached from Canton Hills. So this was back when Canton Hills was formed. Though no background on that exactly why the line was run two hundred feet off the west edge of the whole lot, you can say, the two areas are equal acreage, so they're both about four and a half, we'll order four and a half acreage section. So the western, what's defined as the western two hundred feet of lot one is where the house is located. It's unincorporated cane tummy.
Question, that is the piece of ground that's directly northwest of the five N four two eight house?
So five N four two eight is that portion.
Okay.
So the five N four two eight, the house is actually unincorporated cane tummy.
Okay.
So this portion of the opposing located part on it is actually in Kansas. So as part of combining that to an annexation unit, it would, you know, that would combine a lot back into one single lot of roughly eight point seven two, I think, I remember before we moved in, eight point seven two, eight point eight two acres, maybe a little bit J S or survey. So I think that the crux of the situation is effectively the house is set back so far, set back to one hundred dollars, one hundred and sixty feet, or maybe, maybe one hundred and sixty, that basically everything that's flat on the building will be considered the front yard, right? So it's a large piece of property, and you can see, you can see from, kind of the scale of, of the drawing of the survey, which I apologize for the smallness of it, but kind of highlights how small the structure is relative to the property. So behind the house, it goes down, grades down quite a bit, and it's the school, which is effectively, so that's not billable. Behind the house itself is, you know, cemetery fields, so that's not billable. And I had originally looked at building a barn within the unincorporated cane tummy portion, wouldn't need any permission for that, but that's, you know, that's what my kids want. So normally, you know, they'd like their baseball field, it's not where people want that. So this area makes a lot of sense, it used to be, you know, horse pasture, back and day, and, and so it would be a nice, nice spot for accessory structure. The purpose of it is to basically, similar to what we were just talking about, I have an RV, I have a boat, I have a classic car, this is a category of restoration, you know, I got my hobbies, and I like to keep them out of the, out of the way, and I have a visual sightline, and I don't think, I don't think it, it looks great, and then all the people that now consider it front yard. So I think it, it makes a lot of sense that it makes the, you know, makes the point, probably in the front, it's really a lot of traffic, so that's, that's really my question.
Okay, all right. Before we get started, I just want to make sure that the previous petitioners, I don't want to hold you hostage, if you, if you, if you want to stay, you're more than welcome to stay, but if you'd like to gather, if you'd like to gather your stuff...
I just, we didn't want to interrupt this.
Yeah, I, I get it, so I just want to, yeah, so...
Thank you for that.
Yeah. Yeah.
[laughter]
So the, the property was divided...
The property was divided to be able to build the house on the second lot. So you don't, you're not planning on selling that lot in the future for another house?
You know, we had gone through that quite back and forth, and it was kind of like, well, you know, maybe we keep it as a separate lot, because, you know, but I like the way it is, and I was there, and actually, changing that, so, you know, my wife and I, the way it's like, there in here, we like to have a chunk of property where it is, and I want it to be as mincered as possible, and to put the two, we're going to, the property we have to use.
No, I think that's fine. So then, are you going to put the two lots back to one, then? One lot?
Yeah, so that would be, that would be the annexation unit.
Okay.
I mean, whether or not we retain two, I don't know if it's a package, we retain two pins or not, but the annexation unit would be stored, but the lot back there, you know, they'd be kind of together, because the second, second lot does not have the primary structure.
Right, right, okay.
I figured you may be more knowledgeable about it.
Any other questions?
Just, out of curiosity, when did you buy the lot?
We closed in, it's April seventh.
Of 2025?
Yeah.
This year, okay.
Okay. It's a beautiful piece of property, though.
Yeah, I agree.
It's, it's just gorgeous. I always tell people, I said, if you could walk to the backyard, I mean, it's just gorgeous, that whole wetland area, it's just a gorgeous view there, and there's nobody behind you.
Forest Reserve, right? Is that Forest Reserve back there?
Well...
A park portion of it?
The property is, you own part of the, the wetland, and then the Forest Reserve is behind that.
Okay.
Forest Reserve of Bucks, I was in the north.
To the north.
Yeah, there's, it's all constructed, I think the nearest houses...
So, in defense, there, yeah, there's no way to build anything behind the house. The design, if you could walk back there, you would see there's no way to put anything in the back.
Okay.
So, there, you have no choice really.
It sounds like the choices are behind the house or to the east of the house.
You can't go behind that. I don't think there's, there's not enough.
Like you said, you didn't wanna go behind the house because that's where the kids play.
It's a hillside ranch, so the property drops off, yeah.
Yeah, and the only flat area behind the ranch is.
Right.
Then, yeah, you get the limit is there.
There's really no way to put anything back there.
Okay, yeah, okay.
What's the appearance going to be like? I saw you have this drawing in our packet of the actual barn. What's the finish going to be?
Uh, the true barn finish, so it's a steel structure, steel siding.
Yeah.
And I, yeah, the lettering, the lettering shows, I actually have, it's slightly updated. Put the link to on the other side.
Yeah, okay. That's what it's supposed to look like?
That's what, yeah, this is probably.
Because the one in our packet was reversed.
It's, yeah, exactly. It's the same thing, just reversed.
Because that's what the layout shows.
So, this would be, so this would be towards the house. This would be facing the slough, so this would be facing north, northwest.
Just like on the diagram, okay.
Yeah, I can provide this as well, so.
Yeah, so it's gonna look like, it was how the doors face.
Yes, so this is, yeah, so the doors would be right here, the big doors. And then there's a little, I don't know if you can zoom in on that, but there's a little, that's what it leaned to is.
Alright, so the big doors are here?
Correct.
Alright, so they're not facing the road per se?
No, they're facing the house, right. They're facing the house. Yeah, the idea is to be able to, the idea is to be able to drive into the driveway and then turn back in to put a boat and RV in there. And then, I don't know if we'll put gravel or whatever behind here, but I'll have a secondary garage door, so.
What is this additional, is this the actual footprint? I'm confused by this line and that one.
Oh, that's a dimension line. That's all that is. Again, it's like the size of the, the size of the drawing is so small compared to the size of the property.
And then what's, what's the, is that another driveway entrance or what?
No, no, that's again, another dimension line. That's fifty foot.
Okay.
I just had that as a line to show fifty foot off the property line, so.
Thank you.
So, the driveway, it says proposed driveway, so is it, there is a current driveway going to the house? You look like you're just gonna s- lay it like a Y, right?
Is gravel.
That's gravel?
So, then my plan is to split it to the right to create a turnaround, have a teardrop shaped turnaround. That would be paved, not just asphalt paved.
So, there would not be a new entrance to the?
The entrance would be widened.
Widened, okay.
So, the width right now is, I would say fifteen feet or thereabouts. And then the proposed would be no bigger than thirty, but probably more realistic. Doesn't need to be that much wider. Now, this particular location is at the top of the hill, so there is no pole. So, it just, you know, the water breaks in the direction, so there's no extension of the pole.
Right.
About the best spot.
Alright, let's see. Would there, what kind of, I mean, I don't, I've driven by the property, I don't know, but what kind of, you said it's beautiful and everything, trees, I think you got cut down a bunch of trees or is it a prairie or what?
So, given that the area is what is basically formerly horse prairie, the trees there are, you know, most of them would be to get cut down, they're just small, kind of, you know, they're not plant trees. So, my plan would be to, you know, build a vegetation wall or something on the side. I wipe this particular bit of those things along the road to, you know, create a visual barrier. Our goal is to have very aesthetically easy.
I would do one of my things, I think, having a landscape barrier along Brown Road, I think, would be a wise condition.
I was out there this afternoon and it's pretty dense already.
It is, well, that's exactly right, so what's along, what's along the road right now is all very trees and very.
Deciduous.
When I remove what's needed for this structure, it's still gonna be difficult to see the structure.
Yeah.
Without me ID. So, it's already pretty dense.
I could see, I don't know everything, but if it's all deciduous, then, you know, you can see everything. So, maybe some, like you say, arborvitae or some type of evergreen might not be a bad, you know, secondary.
All such a good view as Mr. Anderson suggested, maybe we don't wanna have that much of a.
The barn is between you, I'd like to maybe have a buffer between.
Over, over here.
Yeah, you don't wanna ruin it either, but that, that north property was pasture. And in the last twenty years, you know, all the junk trees.
Yeah, all the weed, the weed trees.
You don't want them anyway.
Right, yeah, I'm just asking, just to get some input and to see what is there, so that sounds, that sounds.
You know, the whole proposal from my perspective, this is a, this is a win-win. So, Hampton Hills gets this odd shaped cutout back. And I get to put a secondary structure where I wanna put it. And it makes everything better because right now I have an RV, a boat, a more interesting speed steer and soon speed, you know, inherited classic car. I don't want them all sitting, neither do I, so.
Alright, any questions, comments, concerns? My only good concern, I said, is like, I don't know the exact landscape layout and everything, but maybe some type of a buffer, an evergreen type of buffer between the building and the road, just to help.
Would that be a hard requirement?
Could make it a condition. We could make it a condition, so.
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
It's farmland, so as I'm concerned, yeah. Especially if it's reunited and made in eight acres. And that's where, you know, I'd rather see a barn there than to see another occupancy, another house or something like that.
Alright, very good. Alrighty.
I don't know why the line, why did they do that, you know, why they cut the lot with the end to the house?
I'm not sure.
I was really looking at you.
I don't know. I have no idea why.
Okay.
That would be John Thornhill. You'd have to ask John.
I'm getting the impression that we have no problems here, so.
The property, and the thing is, it's not out of keeping.
So, we can have a motion.
Immediate character of the neighborhood because on that side of the road, the barn is in front of the house that's next door at five N three two eight.
Yeah.
So, it'll be hard to tell which came first, you're knowing your building styles.
Oh, which, which, which building is that?
Uh, there's a barn in the front of the house of five N three two eight.
Next door, to the south.
So, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, just to the south of it.
But that was done before we were village.
Right, right.
Okay, no, but yeah, just saying.
It fits in, you know.
Yeah, it's hard to say when your neighbor has it, right, so, okay.
And they're both large parcels, so that's.
Yeah, that mitigates it. Okay, so we have findings. Shall we just take, how about, there is a red motion?
Yeah, I do have one comment. I don't like to read these. This is short and I only got one. I got it this afternoon. Yeah, the fellow Joseph Bogachowski writes, please address concerns from homeowners on the request for a metal building on Brown Road. Will it just be a big silver metal structure or actually a barn designed to fit in with the area? How far will it be set back from the road as to not be visible to all? Will all the trees and prairie look, be kept as is? Will there be a separate driveway coming off Brown Road? And then finally, as much as we respect homeowners doing as they like with their own property, we do not like the idea of an industrial look creeping into our area. Thank you.
I saw that.
Yeah, okay. I think we addressed a lot of those.
Yeah, actually, actually, I think that the only thing, maybe the driveway was perhaps the one thing that didn't get discussed already.
Just widening, widening the driveway.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think that'd be an issue.
Right.
Alright.
So, now the condition of annexation, where is that attached?
Well, you can, I mean, don't really make that a, I guess it wouldn't be a condition. I guess they could make it as a condition of annexation or plat of consolidation as well. I mean, we won't, again, the variance, he's only getting a variance to place it in the front yard. But there's still the issue of he's placing a building on a lot without a primary structure. So, he still couldn't do it. He still has to, this is only, you know, one, one of, one of two things he has to do. And the annexation would solve the other kind of showstopper here.
Well, which step needs to occur first? The annexation, so it becomes one lot?
I mean, what will happen at the village board level, they'll have a level, they'll have a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission with conditions perhaps. And then they would do the annexation agreement, annexation hearing. They're also, probably have to come back here for a rezoning as well. And then plat of consolidation, if you decide to do that, that's not a hearing. And then, and then it would all be, and then the variance would get approved.
So, the rezone?
I haven't seen, I haven't seen their annexation agreement, what they're proposing. It was still in the works, so.
Can I touch on the rezoning?
Yeah, yeah.
So, I don't think it would need to be rezoned because it's already two right now. And so, even if it was combined as eight point nine acres.
Right.
It still do that falls within RE two.
Right, but I think we have, when we annex, things come, there's a, I'd have to check. I think there's a default when it comes in. It oughta, there's a default that it gets rezoned to.
Unless that was, unless it was addressed in the annexation agreement.
Yeah.
Yeah, the default, I think it's already one.
Right, yeah. Like I said, I haven't seen the annexation agreement. I assume, you know, it's gonna be a fairly simple, simple one, but. I've done this before and really the kind of, it's best to get what would be, what I always call the showstopper out of the way. Is there a positive recommendation coming from this body? Do they, if they don't get one, do they wanna proceed with the rest of it? Like, if everyone here said no and there was a lot of opposition or whatever, then maybe he would reconsider his plans and not do the annexation agreement, you know, so.
Okay.
So, when he gets to the annexation hearing, annexation agreement level, then everything just falls into place, you know. That's the way I've done it before. I mean, there's probably four or five different ways to skin this cat.
So, you're saying zoning though, you have to look at it again?
I'd have to see, I mean, we might be able to take care of that through the annexation agreement, you know.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it is RE two right now. It's a very similar type.
If it.
It's a false RE one.
It's a win-win, so I would think we'd wanna keep the board.
Right, and especially with a singular parcel like this with common ownership of the one next door that's already in the village. I mean, it's likely that the annexation agreement will address, you know, it'll say that, you know, properties that come into the village come in as RE one, but the village agrees that immediately upon annexation, you know, by board action, it will be rezoned to RE one.
I know we bought it that way, but it shouldn't have been done that way. I don't know why the whole thing wasn't in the village. And it's not really useful.
Yeah, no, it's not. And I don't think that's a consideration, but I think we're just looking at what's the best steps to go next.
You don't wanna come back here.
No, yeah.
So.
Probably wouldn't.
So, I guess the question in my mind then, we have a, we have a motion that could be read. It talks about approving this as going forward. But I guess the question is out there, do we, do we have any condition on there like, along with the annexation agreement or something, some verbiage along that line or not?
I, I would probably say conditioned upon, upon annexation of the parcel that contains the primary structure into the village. And then once that happens, then the village board can immediately approve the special use, I'm sorry, variance right after the annexation, you know, it'd be an annexation agreement via ordinance and then an annexation ordinance immediately after that and then the variance would be approved.
So, that fixes the house issue, the primary structure. That fixes that first.
Right, right.
So, then you would want to combine the two lots into a single entity?
That, that could or it doesn't have to be.
That makes it owner occupied for the whole thing and.
Right, makes it clean up.
Right, I mean, that could be a condition on the special use is that it's joint ownership. You know, legally, the consolidation's not formally required because they're joint ownership. Lots are right next to each other, but if that is something that the applicants would agree to, then yes, we would include that, you can include that as a condition here. We'd also include it in the annexation agreement.
Which is fine. The only issue is that it's gonna cost money to consolidate, so.
It's violating.
You gotta change your legal description.
Sure.
So.
New survey, right.
Plat of consolidation.
Plat of consolidation, right.
That's the issue.
Yeah, then that, that.
Here's my story, here's the process. While you're, especially if it doesn't cost any additional money.
Well, that's, this is already.
I just don't think we should make it hard.
Sure.
But I think the data is, so.
The other aspect of it though is, could it come, once combined, could you actually go to an F zone? Cause it's larger than five acres. And therefore, it would have appeal for future buyers when there's fewer small, large lots available for horses, whatever. I know, you know, we could do it as is, but I just, I just don't know that would add actually value to the situation.
That just goes back to the whole zoning ordinance that we went through and said, what's the intended purpose of that? The intended purpose of that is home residence, that's the intended purpose. So, I think the zone, I understand your premise, your idea. But I think we wanna stick with not having those, those kind of different zones out there when the primary use really is not farming. The primary use is RE two or RE one, whatever it is, you know, if it's more five acres, so. Okay, so I then, I'd like to make, I'd like to have a motion, but I guess I just wanna get clarified before the motion's made. That we, the condition would be, oh, do we have a public comment?
I was gonna ask one of these comments.
He's telling you.
Or don't pose a curve before the motions.
Okay, sure. Would you like to make a public comment? Go right ahead.
I can do it from here if I.
I, yeah.
Kind of in the air. You've talked about a lot of stuff. I can't see how it cannot be combined because of the problem with the building without a primary residence on it. You can't get around that unless you go to the village household side or going away at that requirement.
No, it's a, it's called a zoning lot. So, when two adjacent parcels within the same block, so it couldn't be across the street, if they are under common ownership, from a zoning perspective, you can treat those as one lot. That's the definition of a zoning lot, so that's, it's okay if it's not.
One is in Hampton Hills and the other is unincorporated.
Right, and that would be resolved with the annexation. Then we would have two adjacent lots under common ownership, so it would be a zoning lot within the village. And that would be okay.
That's our plot.
I probably did with that. My question is, why does it have to be thirty-five three foot from the front block line? If you have, when your home is a hundred and seventy feet set back from the street?
So, it won't be thirty, it'll be fifty. In the diagonal measure of the house, in the diagonal measure of the lot, where the road comes in. It tapered, the shape of the lot is kinda tapered in that way along. If you ran the front point of the house, it'd intersect with the road in that way, right? So, although the house is this far back, as you move north, they get closer, right? And so, the way that the property falls off, the area is flat and on the building, you know, the level of crazy is, it's just, that's about as far back as it could be.
And you said earlier that you were asking why these weren't connected? The town and that's vacant property are essentially land and not a house with land. So, when we own the town, that was a lot that was part of Hampton Hills. The other lot was still unincorporated, Saint Charles. That's why they weren't combined, right? You just bought a lot.
Well, so it's, well, that's, that's not actually, it was originally incorporated in Hampton Hills. There was a detachment that took place the year, you're following now, depending on when Hampton Hills is incorporated. That was taken to the history prior to mine, so fairly large given. So, this lot, the development across the streets and the adjacent farm zone property was all incorporated in Hampton Hills. Then there was an action to detach that portion. Then there was an action to detach that portion, it detached the farm next door, detached all of that subdivision, and it detached half of this lot, just the two hundred foot west. So why the decision was made to go just that two hundred, let's just feet with the house and not the pasture and the rest of the lot, I can't see the point against you now, but, yeah, that was, that was trying to start with this time.
All right.
There's nothing that's not on your street.
Any other comments, any other to share?
I was just concerned that.
Always got to be some twist.
Fifty feet back, not thirty-five feet, and certainly I don't know.
According to the diagram, it looks like fifty feet to the center of the structure? It looks like fifty feet to the apex of the center of the structure, not fifty feet to the leading edge of the structure?
No, so the drawing again, it's, oh, just.
Oh, is that just, oh, that's just another line, obviously, that's just another, so it is the leading, yeah, it's the corner of the building.
It's the corner, yeah.
Okay, I, I mistook that other seventy-five foot as part of the building. Okay, got you, okay, all righty. All right, so any other comments, questions, concerns? So I'm thinking about a motion, and then with the condition of annexation, so.
How do we need to state that?
So I would probably read page seven, the top of page seven, and then Carmen, help me out at the bottom. There you go, that red, that red area, yeah. So read that, and then we would like to add in there, subject to annexation. What do you think, what's your recommendation?
I would say, said granting of the variance subject to annexation of the subject property, or the property, the.
I know, sorry.
The adjacent property containing the primary residence.
What's the address there?
Five N.
Five N four two eight.
Yep.
I'm sorry, is that again, five, was it?
Five N four two eight.
Five N four two eight, thank you. All right.
So that becomes a condition?
That's what I'm proposing, to put the add on that. So we read the red.
If I read the motion as written, we're good.
All right, well, along with.
Subject to the conditions.
The granting of the annexation of the adjacent property five N four two eight. Sound good, okay, so I would read that in red, and then subject to granting the annexation of adjacent property five four and two eight. Sound good?
That, that, and that would go right, that would go right before the additionally.
Right before additionally.
So it'd be at the end of the first sentence.
I'm sorry.
It would go right at the end of the first sentence.
It's located in front yard, it's in the third sentence, it goes located in front yard, period. Then you'd add in, subject to granting the annexation of adjacent property five N four two eight. And then you'd say additionally, I motion that the plant commission accept that.
I'll try.
All right.
I motion that the plant commission zoning board of appeals recommend to the village board the approval of a variance from the requirements of table eight dot one of the twenty twenty-four zoning ordinance and allow a barn to be located in the front, in a front yard. Subject to.
Granting.
Granting.
Annexation.
An annexation.
Of adjacent property.
Of the adjacent property.
Five N four two eight.
Five N four two eight.
Additionally.
Additionally, I motion that the plant commission zoning board of appeals forward the findings as discussed and stated on pages three dash four.
Nick, that's the old, page six of the staff report, that's the old.
I'm sorry.
Page six.
Page six of the staff report.
I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second, Mr. Johnson, any discussion, further discussion? All right, I would say have a, about a voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
So tell me the.
You had to roll call?
Roll call.
Yeah, I can, I'll do it. Commissioner McKelvey.
Aye.
Commissioner Kopeck?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Chairman Frederick?
Yes. Motion case, all right. Thank you, sir, thank you for your time.
Anyone who's done that?
Yes.
So it's good to have a station here, we look forward. I'll have, I guess. I mean, I'm sure he knows what to do with that. Just send it to you guys.
Yeah, yeah. You're four to three, you have mine, and your attorney will look it over and then.
Forward it to you.
Yeah, I think to me first, that you have my contact, I mean, yeah, I mean, either one of us, if you have his contact, I mean, I don't really care. I'll take a look, and I just hope that you have my contact.
I appreciate your time.
Likewise, appreciate yours.
Were we going to do it, the findings, okay, do we need to go over that?
That was a joint motion approving the findings.
Okay, yeah.
Thanks for the backup, though, I appreciate that. Okay, item number seven, discussion of affordable housing plan, discussion's a keyword.
Yep, C E O.
So we did all the findings, the tax stuff, okay then?
I think, yeah, the.
You approved them as they were.
As part of the motion.
They were included in the staff report.
Which I didn't think there's any problem with, because it was all pretty well. Thank you, but thanks for crossing the Ts and dots, yeah, I appreciate it. You, you rest them, that's fine, we, we, we'll start without you, but that's okay, don't worry. Discussion on Affordable Housing Plan two thousand and fifteen draft revisions, Jim, why don't you just give us a little background on this?
Yeah, I, how much do you want me to tell you about the?
Why are we doing this?
The Affordable Housing and Appeal Act. I mean, where, there, there's a list that comes out about every three years, long computations to determine what local governments are not supplied, do not have their share of affordable housing. And that list's been coming out since, I think, two thousand and four, maybe was the first one. Hampton Hills has been on that list of what is referred to as non-exempt local governments. Those are the ones that aren't meeting this certain threshold. We've been on since two thousand and fifteen, there's forty-four communities on the current list, it used to be forty-eight or forty-nine, so I guess there's been somehow some progress made. And if you're on that non-exempt list, if a local government is on that list, then they have to submit an affordable housing plan to the Illinois Housing Development Authority. And that plan has to contain certain items. So we had a plan done in two thousand and fifteen, the plan has to be updated every ten years. So that's one of the reasons we're doing this now. And secondly, the state statute has amended, so there's slightly different requirements. So we have to fulfill that. And thirdly, we would have to update some of the demographic data, that's kind of the easy part here. So we'd have to do that, so that's why we're revisiting this. I really didn't want to change a whole lot, I changed the introduction because that discusses some of the changes to the state statute. There's now forty-four communities. Some of the strategies that you can propose, that you, you need to fulfill have changed. It used to be a minimum, so you have three choices to pursue. One is a minimum of fifteen percent now, used to be ten percent, of all new development or redevelopment within the local government, that would be defined as affordable. You know, a minimum of a five percent increase, our goal would be a minimum five percent increase in the affordable housing, or a minimum of ten percent of all affordable housing, all housing within the jurisdiction would be affordable. And this is our two thousand and fifteen plan, I made, I think, a few relatively minor changes to it. The actual plan itself, I did touch, I'd have to change, where it says ten percent to fifteen percent probably. But I'm just looking for feedback before I really try and dive in and.
Sure. Okay.
Change things, and.
What happens if you don't do it?
Well, again, the state statute changed, it used to be if, if an affordable housing developer came, and there was a definition for affordable housing developer, came and made a proposal, and for affordable housing, and the municipality, for whatever reason, turned that down, then that developer could take it to a state board, and that board could essentially over, overrule your local zoning. Now, it's a little broader who can make that appeal to the state board. It's, I can't remember, it's like, almost like any bona fide affordable housing advocacy group, for example, could do it. Wouldn't necessarily have to be a developer. And so that's the state statute.
Okay, I've got.
Yeah, and, and I'll just leave it at that for now.
All right. I got a couple of comments for you.
Yeah.
All right, so let's go, I understand we're making some changes here, changing three to, you know, three to five, and up to fifteen percent, and then just kind of, this little wordsmithing on some of the stuff, which is good. The, I don't know what page it is, but the third page, so you got introduction, you got the second page, so, oh, yeah, under, top of the, well, page ninety-nine, it says, the top, the very top says background and intent, which I think is the third page of the. If you go down, you've got, and stuff in brown, which, the big question is, you said how? So it says, you said suggest striking, it's above, it says establish affordable housing in a manner inconsistent with the overall character of the village would be detrimental to the village's environment and put at risk public safety and health, health and safety, and you say how? I think that was your question, how do you, how do you validate that statement? The only thing I could come up with, lack of sewage capacity and the overall use of existing spray, sewage spray fields.
That's what I assumed it was, but.
Yeah, that, that would be the only thing I could come up with, but I think it could hurt harm the environment if you try to overload, overload the system, you start spraying raw sewage or whatever, or untreated, that hasn't been treated long enough, or you just don't have the capacity, and I think that would be. Yeah, so that would be, that'd be just one, I'm just trying to answer your question, Jim.
Sure, yeah.
Then, oh, I, I guess under the next page, under the title that says three affordable housing plan, section III, III, or three, three A, I just see a whole bunch of numbers in there, and my question was, you know, are these numbers still accurate?
No, that's, that's what I have to.
You have to do.
I have, I didn't do that, I didn't really have time to do that, but I would, that, that obviously needs to be updated.
Yeah, that's fine.
The format would be pretty much the same. And there's language in our new comprehensive plan that I think is a little different, I'd have to, you know, review that, so we aren't quoting anything that's, that's, I mean, we haven't approved the new plan yet. That, I think, a discussion item on the nineteenth, and then probably a vote September second.
Over the comp plan?
Yeah, for the comp plan. So, I mean, it, it seems kind of odd that we would use an old plan that we know is going to be updated very shortly, you know, so. I think the final version of this, you know, would not be forwarded to the village.
Until the numbers.
Until, until we do that.
Okay.
I, I do, you know, I, I failed to mention, there was a deadline on this, it was back in June, June twentieth or something like that. I'm not concerned, because there's, of those forty-four to forty-nine communities that have been on this list for about two decades now, there is a handful, maybe more than a handful, that have just never done it. I actually took a call from a planner from another community in great panic. She saw we were on the list and wanted to know what she was doing about it, because their community had never done it, they had no interest.